Dan. Councilmember Luis Galindo. Councilmember Miguel Villalpando. Councilmember Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Marta Gonzalez.
Present.
Vice Mayor, have a question.
Thank you. We're gonna forego all formalities and we're gonna start with presentations. Three point one discussion pertaining to police department compensation and benefits.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, Chona Madell, Finance Director. The purpose of this review is to discuss police department staffing to ensure we are effectively meeting the need of our community while maintaining efficiency and fiscal responsibility. What you have before you is, basically, the discussion is that the police department is facing shortages, so shortages due to low salaries and lack of incentives, trailing behind Yuma County and the outside agencies. Our proposed actions would be salary adjustments to ensure competitiveness and a thousand dollar retention incentive for post-certified officers, a future incentive package for fiscal year 2026. The police, the police chief and the finance were closely monitoring, monitoring the budgets, and we will keep monitoring the budgets in order to maintain fiscal responsibilities. Because a lot of these numbers that is included in the package are based on averages. The presentation highlights the critical need for these adjustments to retain officers and maintain public safety. While this is an administrative process, council, council input is essential for moving forward with these changes. The financial impact will be on our general fund. And it will be an additional ninety-five thousand ninety-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Again, this is an average. This is for salaries, incentives, and benefits. The fiscal impact statement is the total projected cost for fiscal year 25. This is including the remaining of the salaries. Is seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Remaining budget after this adjustment would be a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-four. And then the current police budget overall is at fifty-five percent of the expenditures, which at this point in time for our fiscal year, it should be at sixty-seven percent. This is primarily due to the vacancies that she is encountering at this moment in time. The next page is just a presentation overview. I'm not gonna read it per capita for you. It's basically stating that our, our dispatch basically census of how much we've lost in the past few years. Starting from 2021 all the way to currently. This includes the dispatch as well as post-certified officers. Again, I went over the salary adjustment proposal. And basically, all we're doing is coming together to see if you guys have any questions or any, any, anything that you need that needs to be clarified in the attached proposal.
I have a question. Does this address compression as well for those officers that are at?
Yes, yes. If you go to the spreadsheet page, which is in green. We, as a team, HR, Chief, Administration, we all did our due diligence to look and see what the police officers and the dispatchers were leaving us for. Basically, it's surrounding areas. And so we used that starting point and then addressed it throughout the entire department. And at this moment, we are only looking to address the dispatch and the post-certified officers. And then moving into the future as far as budgetary for fiscal year 26 to identify all the different other compression issues.
Vice Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Castillo is gonna go first, and then you'll go next.
So, Sean, looking at your proposed actions, they were that we've only spent, I think, fifty-five percent of the budgeted, right? But that's also due to having four vacant.
Correct.
So, let's say if next year, we, we have all the positions filled and everything. I mean, well, is this, is this sustainable?
Yes, because it'll be budgeted.
So where, where would those, where would we make up those funds from?
So, the, the funding issue overall, we have to, we have to really focus on our biggest asset, which is our, our employees. So at that moment in time, when I budget, I, I budget our staffing first. So we need enough funds in order to run our city, which involves our staffing. So that's what I do first. And because we are so far behind in our salary and our wages, overall, not only the police department, it's all throughout the whole city. The, the impact is large. You know, if, if increments were done over the past years, you wouldn't have such a big impact. But it is going to be a larger impact for fiscal year 26. But again, the way that the, the proper standards or the, the appropriate standards to budget is to budget your staff first, and then everything else comes below that. So as far as sustainability, yes, it's sustainable for our staff. Then, then we'll work on how to save throughout the operating budget and the operating line items.
So let's say right now, we, we're fully staffed. It's 2026, we're fully staffed. Where would we be looking at to save?
The operating items. So the line items, the, what, what I call frill. You know, the, the, the items that really don't, are not necessary for operations. Is where we're gonna have to kind of be a little tighter on in order to make up and to be able to sustain our salaries.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Villalpando.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I guess my, my biggest concern on this is that, uh, what is it, what, what is, what is the biggest immediate need? Because of, for my understanding, when I first received notice of this, it was a police, police officers, not necessarily dispatch. And now we're rolling, rolling dispatch into it as well. And I just want to be able to, to solve the immediate need, which is the police officers. Because again, with, along with Councilmember Castillo's question, the, the impact is gonna be to the general fund, general fund money. And that means that you're gonna probably sacrifice anything and everything that was the, that is possibly funded by that general fund, which could be events, it could be different things. So I think right now, in, in order not, not to get ahead of ourselves as we take care of what the immediate need, and that was as per conversation, was, was, was the, the police officers' pay.
I'm sorry, Councilman, and your question was?
No, it wasn't a question, it was a statement.
Any other comments? Louie?
Thank you. And, uh, Chief Juarez, you are, you are okay with that, that you're gonna sacrifice some of your things for next budget, huh? And I think we need police officer, we need the dispatcher. I've always said in the past, crime in Yuma and Somerton is the same. A patient for, we're not talking about paramedics right now, but I feel the same, you know? They're on the same danger, they should be on the same level, getting paid. I, I don't know, and if we continue this way, we're gonna be losing more and more people, not just. We, we get them ready, qualify them for all this, and then they go to Yuma two years later because then we're already spending money on them, getting them there, and then they go. So I think it's, if we're looking in police, I think we should look in everything. I feel that dispatcher, patrolman, chief, captain, everything. Instead of breaking it down in just police, I know that when we got that notice, it was mainly police officers. But now that we're here, that's why you guys are presenting, and I feel comfortable. If you, Sean, if you are the Finance Director, if you feel comfortable, and Chief Juarez, I'm comfortable with your decision. And I feel we have to do this right now before we get critical law. What, what will happen if we get, if we lose two or three more? Do we have to go out and contract? How much would that cost?
We would have to contract.
And how much would that cost to us?
And it'll probably be a lot more than what we're looking at right now.
So I know in the past, you know, you guys said every year or every two years, different police cars, you know, renew the, maybe we're all sacrificed one police car. We, maybe we don't need a police car next year, and we'll sacrifice it until we get more revenue. But I think the immediate threat right now is they're going to Yuma because they're getting paid. I don't know what's the salary starting in Yuma.
Thirty, thirty-one.
And what do we wanna bring to thirty here? Or what, what's?
Yes, we're, we're starting at the thirty, thirty fifteen. That's the starting.
Vice Mayor, if I may? And I just want to point out also that, uh, that's, there's, and Yuma's a little bit higher, but there's also incentive packages that are way different than ours. So really, it's to be competitive and to retain. We understand, and, and just talking to other municipalities, this, this cycle is, is ongoing. It is. It's not something that we're gonna resolve, but we need to address if we want, like Councilman Galindo says, if we want that level of service to continue here in Somerton.
And, and again.
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And again, uh, my, 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 my point is, is that we don't know the numbers for the, for the dispatchers or anything like that for a full year's cycle. And so I don't mind doing the PD because, or the police officers, and that also includes captains and lieutenants and whatever else are, are, are identified as, as police officers. But, uh, that, that is the immediate need right now. And it would be premature for us to jump into the, the dispatchers when the immediate need was identified as, as the, the officers. Let's resolve that then for this fiscal year, I'm not, or next budget year. They, we, we take a serious look in, in, uh, making sure that all, all, all the rest of them are properly compensated as well as the rest of city staff. But regardless, it's still gonna have an impact on the, on the general fund. And so what are we willing, willing to sacrifice to ma- make those accommodations or those adjustments in salaries?
Vice Mayor. And, you know, I, 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 I do feel that, I mean, we do need to get competitive because I think the last thing we want is, is we wanna make sure that we, if someone calls for public safety, that we have someone that's properly trained to respond. You know, I think that's, that's, that's what our residents do expect. So I, you know, I, I, I do like this proposal. And, and, I mean, you said it, Sean, that, you know, if, if hypothetically, if this moves forward, I mean, I think it's gonna have, have to come at a, at a, kind of like a sacrifice throughout the city, because I mean, we're, this is gonna be our, our, our priority. So, you know, as, I, I think as long as all staff and, and every director is aware that that there, there is gonna have to be some, some, uh, some, some hard decisions to make. Again, I mean, I, I, public safety, I mean, I, my, my biggest thing is, is it's sustainable? Can we look at other close factors to see where we could save funds? You said that, that there are ways. You know, in my head, I'm just thinking, well, why didn't we look at that in the past, right? But I mean, we can only move forward and trying to focus on that. But if, if you're saying that this is sustainable, without sacrificing the level of service across the board, then I, I, you know, I, I feel okay with it.
Yeah, as, as of right now, that this, this budgetary process, it is sustainable under this budget. This, this move going through all the dispatchers and all the patrolmen because the patrolmen don't get the, the, the calls and the information unless the dispatchers are fully trained and fully knowledgeable. So that's the reason why we put them together. But this is sustainable under fiscal year 25 budget because of the vacancies that the chief has had over the year. So this is sustainable. Moving forward in fiscal year 26, we wanna move forward. And again, I, I don't know how I can express my importance of really focusing on our biggest asset, which is our personnel.
And what about, uh, what, what the community wants and what the community needs? It's a fine balance. To me, it's not just about employees, it's also about the, the residents. It's a balance, it's tough choices. But if you put priority one over, over the, the other, then you're gonna have a community that, whose quality of life is, is being affected. That's why I'm, I'm asking and I'm stating that we focus on what's the primary need. If you loo- look at the overall city administration, we all rely on, on each other. So dispatchers rely, rely on police officers, but also there is, uh, there's finance. Everybody relies on, on finances for their paychecks. So in order to single out just, just two, I mean, that's, that's a little unfair for, for, for everybody else. And, and again, this was brought up. It was, they were very specific about police officers. And now we're, we're including other people. Well, in that case, why don't we just take an over, an overall look at everybody else? Because there is people leaving.
Any other questions? I, I also have a comment, but I have it for the chief. Chief, can you please come up? Chief, how long does it take to train a dispatcher?
So, Councilmember Sendejas, good evening, Chief Juarez, Celi Juarez, Chief of Police. So it takes an average to train a dispatcher from four to four months to five months, and some of them to six months. It all depends on their ability to, to dispatch. One of the things that I wanted to point out, maybe I can give Councilmember Villalpando a little bit more information. In the past, we've gone to the point of having only three dispatchers, and we've had to pull the dispatch supervisor to come and help the floor, cover the floor. We've also had to have the record staff, who was a prior dispatcher, come and help us cover the floor. And going back to the service, to the quality of the public, and the last nine or vehicle fatality that we had, we only had one dispatcher because we want to retain the dispatchers, we only have one dispatcher at night. So it's been real difficult. I know we're not losing them at the speed that we're losing the officers, but we are losing them also to San Luis and to Yuma. And again, we don't send them to an academy, but we put them through our academy, which takes from four to six months. It's, it's a long period of time, especially when we have one, one trained dispatcher that does all the training for our dispatchers, and there's no incentive for this dispatcher either. With that, we've also, in our time of need, we pulled a evidence custodian to help us answer the phones and dispatch when we're very, very short. So what we're trying to, to avoid here is to find that circumstance again, where we're having to pull everybody to help us cover dispatch.
And the purpose of my question is because I understand what Councilman Villalpando is saying, but we also need to think about the training. Somerton is growing, and within the next two years, we're looking at about, what, maybe three to five hundred homes? Times three, four per home. We need those individuals in those capacities. So if it takes six months to train one person, how many dispatchers are you short?
Right now, we just filled our last position, but we lost them to YPD, Yuma PD, we just lost one. We've lost them to San Luis PD. With the, the majority of the dispatchers that are at the dispatch center in San Luis right now, we trained them here in Somerton.
And, and I think that having a full staff of dispatchers, police officers, which is, is getting detrimental, it is to provide that service to our community. It is the well-being of our community. Without you and your staff, we're gonna have to find someone else or other agencies to come and support. Now that's gonna cost us triple than what it is now, overtime hours, all of that. So in my opinion, I think we need to address whatever needs to be addressed to provide the service for our residents in public safety. And dispatchers are considered personnel in public safety. So I, you know, this is, we're not gonna make a, a decision today, but it is a sense of, of discussion. And we need to really think about, we all live here. I'm, I'm pretty sure most of us have called dispatch and emergency, and we need them. There's no doubt. So whatever discussions else we need to have, Louie, you know, I, I think we need to address this today with urgency. But with our hearts and minds to understand, we're here to provide a service. And the service is to protect our residents. We're not like Yuma. We're not like San Luis. We are smaller, but we do have the crime. And we do have situations that need to be addressed by public safety. And not only police, fire as well. But we're very fortunate right now that fire, we're, we're okay there. But God forbid, we don't have a, a police available. I don't wanna be in that situation and have to take drastic measures as a public servant that elected me to be here to make decisions for our community. So with that said, I think we need to make a decision or whatever we need to do, Louie.
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Again, this is, for your information, we can do this administratively. We wanted to present this because, of course, like Sean mentioned, it's important for council to understand this, this immediate need that we're running into. I, I understand Councilman Villalpando's concern with, you know, how that will impact the budget. But I think it goes back to us working on the budget and properly identifying those priorities, which we're looking at in here. But then also reviewing some of the other employees. Of course, we, unfortunately, there has to be a priority. And, and so budget-wise, we'll be able to present that to you. But we're getting to a point where, you know, we have limited, and I'm talking limited coverage on those fronts. And, and, and that's not something that, that, that unfortunately we're at. But we, we need to, we need to do something, and, and at least for staff point of view, for council. Again, you know, this is our recommendation, this is what we can do because that level of service is impacted and will be impacted. And, and like you said again, Vice Mayor, if we lose any more, it's gonna cost us way more than this to, to hire people to come and cover and do what we could do with this amount.
You know, and, and I also want to make sure that, that, you know, the public and, and even staff that is listening to us today, everyone is important in our city. Every position, no matter what position they have, is important. But I'm sure they can agree, as residents of this city, that they would want public safety to be available and to be ready for whenever situations occur within themselves and their families and our families. And so you said it's, you could do this administratively. You are our, our city manager, Louie. So what, what is your, what do you want? What, what do you see? What do you want?
I see that, of course, we wouldn't present this if this is something that we didn't feel is vital to the city and important, what we need to do on our day-to-day level of services for our public safety and needs. That we've, we've discussed this, like Sean has mentioned, with finance and HR, and that, that we implement this. And we feel confident we can move in, in the schedule. I agree with Councilman Villalpando that, yeah, the, there, there might be some things, but it doesn't mean we're gonna cut it, we're just gonna change things. But I think we continue to prioritize what the city needs. There's other factors coming in with revenues and different things like that that are coming to Somerton, and that's gonna help support and help us grow. But priority, like you mentioned, Vice Mayor, is, is public safety. You know, if you discuss with other cities and how they manage and budget, there is those priorities, and then you work your way down. It's not limiting, I wouldn't call it limiting or taking away, but there's a balance. And, and I feel very confident that with our staff, that we can provide that balance to you.
Jonah, you checked all your Ts, dotted all your Is, and were not, I mean?
No, this, this budget is sustainable for this fiscal year, correct? And I'm working on next fiscal year, and it will be sustainable due to the fact that we will look at other items and other sources of revenue that are coming in. And just, just to be clear, like how they were, you were, Councilman Galindo had stated about the vehicles and all. Police Department is one department that goes after all the grants that are out there as far as state. So a lot of those vehicles are not general funded. They are all, a, a good majority of them are grant-funded. A lot of their equipment that they're getting is good-funded as far as grant is concerned. So a lot of those items don't come out of general fund.
Vice Mayor, if I may? I, I just wanted to add to Sean, even some positions are grant-funded. So really, we'd be using the grant monies to pay for that. So I mean, again, I just reiterate what Sean said, that the, the police department has been doing a great job trying to get funding to cover everything that they've been doing, and I think they're doing their part as much as they can.
And I would like, I'm sorry, and I would like for you, Chief, to please tell your, your officers and, and your entire staff that we appreciate what they're doing and the sacrifice that they do every day because working double shifts and working multiple paths and doing what they need to do, it's commendable. And I, and I thank them for what they do, especially now that you guys are, are extremely short.
I just have a quick question for Chief. When was the last time you were fully staffed? If, if ever?
I know, not, not during my watch, because I lost, um, in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, I lost six or seven officers, all within that, pretty much that year. And then the last time that I recall that we had twenty-nine officers was in two thousand nine, when we had the Napa homicide. I was a detective at the time, and we were fully staffed, twenty-nine officers.
Wow, and you think this, this would help?
Definitely, yes. Not only would it help to bring in new talent, it would bring in lateral officers would, that would bring experience to help me train the new officers that were sent into the academy. And it would alleviate the load that we put on the sergeants, the lieutenant, and the captain and training new staff.
With, with that said, Chief, you said, um, putting people, future officers in the academy. It, it would, will you be doing something like the chief from Fire does, having them sign something if we're gonna put them through the academy?
Yes, I've been working with Louie, Carmen, and Jonah to get something from the legal, so we can at least get some sort of reimbursement. Jonah can probably talk better to that than I can.
Yeah, so, so we are working on trying to get similar to what the Chief, Chief Fernandez has in place for Fire already to put together, to have some type of reimbursement process if they tend to leave. It's not a contractual agreement because we cannot contract them, but it's some type of reimbursement process because quite a, a lot of money goes into training the officers. And I don't know if you caught Chief earlier, where she said, "We trained most of San Luis dispatchers," so.
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You know, and, and having discussions with legal, we're hoping to bring that to you next month at the next council meeting for the approval. It is a contract in a sense, because there's a percentage. But that's gonna be a very, I couldn't say, it's gonna be in a generic form sense where we can do that, not just for public safety, but it's for any type of training that we are investing into our employees. It could be public works, uh, different things, so that there is some commitment and, and understanding of that. So just to let you know.
So we'll go for dispatchers and officers?
Correct.
That's what Vice Mayor, like Chief Juarez already mentioned, since two thousand nine, we haven't had a full. And I remember Bibi Codman, and he always used to cry to me, "Louise, the employees are, they want more money." They, um, And I remember Bibi Codman, and he always used to cry to me, Louis, the employees are, they want more money, they, I'm, I'm losing. This is not, nothing new. We have had this problem since Bibi Codman was here. And I always said, if you don't fight for your employees, you don't tell us what you need, we don't, we don't know. We got, it got to this point, we have been putting Band-Aids and Band-Aids over and over. Finally, you know, it exploded, it got to this point, and we need to move forward, we need to make a decision, we need to do something, because it's only going to get worse. It's been ten, twelve years since I've been here, and more than that. And it's been the same problem, and we have been putting Band-Aids over Band-Aids, and finally, there's no solution. We need to cut and do surgery here. No, but it, it's time, and, you know, and like, I feel comfortable. Shona, you are the finance director. I always said, if we have the money, why not? You know, we have to, it's like, at my house, if we have to do something drastic, we do, and we, through the year, we do cuts here and there, and that's, this is the same. You guys know better than us, you know, we're just here to say yes, nay, but, and thank you.
Thank you, Louis. You do what you need to do.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. James Jones Parks Director. I'm joined by Rodney Reinhardt, Park Supervisor. Um, over the past year, uh, Rodney, the city manager, myself have, uh, went through all the parks, the fields, and the facilities, and did an audit of what the needs are, and what needs to be addressed to improve service for our citizens. Um, attached is the presentation. I also have, I broke this into CIPs and COPs. Um, we're going to focus on the CIPs tonight. If you would like me to revisit the COPs later, I'm happy to come back and do that. But I provided them to you, so you can see kind of the overall plan of the department. And the main, major things we're going to do is, we're going to really look at grants, uh, sponsorships, partnerships, to try to find funds for these projects, um, and move forward. If you have any questions, go ahead and stop me. I'll try to be as brief as possible to move quickly. Um, if we can go to the Joe Munoz, the, the slide after this. Um, the three, or the items that we found at Joe Munoz Park, um, we wanted to remodel the splash pad up, modernize it, update. The one thing that we were talking about is reusing that, that equipment at the pool, which you'll see later, and a COP, just so we can make that more inviting, the pool, and maybe have more parties there. Um, the irrigation system at Joe Munoz is about twenty years old, so that, that needs to be replaced, and, uh, the Ramada, we want to replace the Ramada A and make a bigger Ramada. You'll see the picture in the middle there. Um, basically having bigger parties, making it more inviting for our citizens. Um, and having a fully inclusive playground, which is something that, there's only one in Yuma County. So that'd be something that we stand out and over San Luis and Yuma. Um, and more people would be more invited to come to our city. On the next page, please. Uh, Council Park, we want, would like to install some pickleball courts, um, some inclusive playground equipment, maybe not a full inclusive playground, but a couple pieces of equipment. Um, and get a new drainage system. Currently, the drainage system kind of goes from the west, in the middle of the sidewalk. We want to move it more towards the, uh, the south, the southwest corner, and kind of make it more directly into the, uh, the retention, rather than it kind of going into the field and down. Uh, and then we want to do some fencing improvements at the Council Park, because right now the fence is about three, three and a half feet tall. We would like to make it a little more nicer, modern, and have it be a little taller, so that we're not having people climb over it, and it's a safety issue. Um, the next page, please. At the Dog Park, we really, due to the, um, growing of the city, um, we know Union Street's going to be kind of opened up to those new neighborhoods, so we're talking about adding a, a parking lot there so that it's more safety, we don't have any as many cars on the road, and it's more inviting for people to attend the Dog Park. And kind of make sure that we are, we keep our citizens safe and our, our animal friends safe. Uh, next page, please. Um, Centennial Park, we found two. We got the museum project that we would like to have done in the next five years, and installing a, uh, park restroom there, kind of like the one we just did at Paracone. To, because right now, our citizens bring their own porta-potties, this would allow them to have their own for, and we can have more rentals and, and events there. Next, please. Uh, the Paracone Park, um, we have two more phases that we would like to do. Um, we want to do the field lights and the walking path lights.
Vice, Vice Mayor?
If I may?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there any way we could push this particular item to another work session? Because he's going through it so fast. Uh, it's not really giving me the opportunity to, to absorb some of this information and, uh, and ask some, ask questions.
I'm happy.
It seems like everything's being rushed. No, 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 it's not your fault, James. I mean, the, or the, the first one went a little bit longer than what we probably anticipated. So I think it's probably be best if we just move it to, to another work session.
What is the rest of council?
I personally feel like, I mean, looking at our agenda for our meeting, I mean, if we go a little bit over, um, I mean, we're already here. My, I, for me, might as well just cover it all. Um, looking at the agenda for our seven PM, I mean, it's, it's not that heavy, so.
Well, the, the thing is, is that it's posted at seven, so we need to start at seven.
Vice Mayor, if I may? We would need to start the meeting at seven, as posted, so. Uh, we are more than happy to bring this back, uh, and, and slow it down here. It is a quick pace. Uh, but, uh, it, I think, I, you know, uh, Councilman, uh, Vialpando, I, I think, uh, we can do that. The, the, this is important, because, um, these are projects that might, uh, be of very interest to, uh, Mayor and Council, and I think, uh, given it a little bit more time. Uh, James, let's try and go quickly to try to get covered, but i- if you like, Vice Mayor, we can, we can table this and bring this back for another work session, or put it into a presentation of what the council needs.
I, I think it is a good idea. I mean, we're talking about a lot of CIPs, a lot of many, and a lot of descriptions that we need, and probably have some other questions that we need. Like, I have a lot of questions on the Dog Park thing. So, um, I think we need to, to table it, if, while council agrees, and we can address that at a later time. So go ahead and let's table it. Thank you, James, for your time. With that said, I think we're done with our agenda. We're done with our agenda for the work session. Meeting's adjourned.